All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have the color guard here. The pledge to fight against this in America. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you there, Ricky. Hopefully Casey makes it here tonight.
Hi, Daniel.
Oh, Dan, thank you. I'll just sit wherever you want. Okay, we have the first up for bid is the consent agenda for our board meeting on day 10, 2022. Okay, does anyone have a motion?
I have a motion to approve that consent agenda. You have to add this. Oh, I'm sorry. No.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. Okay, which ones are we adding? M, O, and P?
Yeah.
All right, so you have to add on the M as Vote Commission Work Orders, O is Council on Aging, and P is Voters' ID Cards for the Regis Working.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have support? Okay, we have a motion and support to approve the consent agenda with the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call vote?
Yes. Keep up the votes.
Okay. Yeah, excuse me, that's right. Roll call vote.
Jonathan, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, we had five votes in the affirmative. Motion carries. Okay, citizens comment. This is for anything not on the agenda that anybody would like to address. Okay, you're gonna wait till then? Okay. All right, our first one up is Dan Casey from St. Clair County Economic Development Alliance, right?
Economic Development Alliance, you got it.
You know, it was just recently, I was on your website. I always thought you were like a branch of the St. Clair County government, but no, you're a private entity.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
There's two different models. One, you stand or you sit, or doesn't matter.
Whatever.
Drive or sit.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Okay, before I do that, I'm gonna pass these over. Take one. There's texter here, so. You guys want my use?
Yeah.
So there's basically two models of how economic development works at county level. The first is that it's a public entity of the county government. That's actually not the most popular way of doing it. And generally, in the bigger, more populous counties, that's what you see. But the majority of our state and really across the country are organizations that are set up by ours, which are nonprofit, membership-based organizations that have a mission to increase tax revenue for communities and to create jobs. We don't create the jobs, but we help catalyze job creation in the county, right? By attracting companies here, by helping existing companies expand, by doing infill development. And then our organization also manages a business incubator and has a virtual incubator program where we help people start businesses. And that makes a job creation, right? The way I like to describe it is helping to create the next generation of businesses for the county. So basically, that's how we're set up, so we're membership-based. Our biggest funder, which is almost 40% of our budget, is the county. So I just wanna make that point. And then we have 10 other communities in addition to the county that are members. And then we have about 168 private sector members. Basically, the larger companies in the county typically are our membership. But today, we're here to talk about tax increment financing. And it's in relation to a project that's in development. I'm assuming the board has talked about this project in the past one, Springborn?
Yeah, I have been briefing the board on them.
So you don't need me to go over the particulars of the project, right?
No.
Okay. So the bottom line is, for that project, is the company wants a water line. They would like sewer too, but I don't think that's even feasible. But they would like a water line, if possible, to this proposed site that they wanna develop that's on I-94. So we got a cost estimate from John Monti, which is, you know, you wouldn't wanna swear on it, but you know, he did the best he could in about an hour. Did you estimate what it would cost?
Yeah, at the meeting today, they actually think that line could be shorter 'cause John calculated on Springborn link all the way up to the end.
Right, I did talk to John. I'm aware of that. He just felt like if you're gonna put the water line in, you wanna extend it to the property line of the next property?
Right.
In case something ever happens.
Yeah, and it was a very conservative approach, I think, John. I mean.
So it was about 1.2 million. It was his rough estimate to extend a water line to the next property beyond this one, basically. So it's a little bit over a mile, right? The water line would come from Ira Township. It'd have to be drilled under the road right at County Line Road. And then it would go from there along County Line to Springborn, and then Springborn around to the proposed development, right? So anyway, that got us to talking about, well, who's gonna pay for that? And how, if it's a community, it's gonna be about, how would the community pay for it? And so in a meeting, I discussed the possibility of tax increment financing. So I'll explain how that works. But that's one option, but it's not the only option to do that. But I think it's, it might be your best option for reasons I was explaining earlier. So basically, tax increment financing is an act that was established in Michigan under, it was called originally TIFA, or Tax Increment Financing Act, that was established back in 1980. And so there were TIFAs districts that were established all over the state. A lot of them in the early days were doing commercial and industrial projects. But after about six years, they essentially eliminated TIFAs and they created the Act 281, which is the LDFA Act, Local Development Finance Authority Act, which was quite a bit different. They weren't the same, but it was quite a bit different in terms of what the state was trying to accomplish at the time that they created that act. So basically, back in like 1985, 1986, economic development corporations were starting to fall off in terms of popularity in the state. That was the previous way that you evolved funding buildings and small units in industrial parks. But that began to fall off. And so the state created the LDFA Act as a way to, for communities to develop industrial parks or to provide public infrastructure to companies that were gonna build a building. Now, in the case of an LDFA, the original one, it was only for industrial projects. You couldn't use it for commercial, whereas with TIFA, the previous version, you could use that for commercial. But when they got rid of that, they created the LDFA's. They only wanted it to be used for industrial projects. And the definition of what that is is pretty broad. So an industrial project can include warehousing, distribution, any kind of production. It can also include technology. So any companies doing research and development falls under that category too. So it's pretty broad, right? So that was back in 19, or yeah, 2006. Approximately is when those really became prevalent. We have several LDFA's in the county in different communities. Typically, industrial parks were created in areas where those LDFA's were put. But not always. Sometimes they were there to support an individual project. The last one, or the most recent one that was formed was in the city of Marysville to support the Chrysler plant that was built there. That site didn't have water and sewer, so they had to extend it. And that's how they did it. And so that's kind of the history of where they came from. There are several different types that have been formed over, or these TIF-type entities that have been formed over the years. So after they created the LDFA Act, later they created another one for brownfield development. So if you're doing any kind of a cleanup activity of site, they allow you to use tax increment financing to cover things like demolition costs, cleanup. And if public infrastructure is needed to support the redevelopment of a contaminated site, then you can use it for that as well. So they created brownfields. And then the very last one that they created was the Commercial Improvement Corridor, which was kind of like going back to the old TIF days, where you could now use it on a commercial corridor, which could be a downtown or it could be a streetlight, I don't know, pick one, grass it, that had some commercial on it and had the potential for additional commercial. And again, it was used to put in public infrastructure to support the development, right? So that's kind of the history and the types that exist out there. And again, the purpose was to fund public infrastructure, but they also give them some pretty broad authority in addition to doing that. So for example, in an LDFA, you create an authority, which is a board. It's a quasi-government agency of the local community, but technically it's separate. And I can talk about that later. You probably have a million questions. I don't wanna give you too much information 'cause it'll just create tons of questions. I'm giving you the basics. So anyway, so in addition to infrastructure, they can build buildings. They can lease buildings. They can buy buildings. They can demolish buildings. They can purchase property. And most importantly, they can issue bonds. And those bonds can be used to do all of those things. Everything from building a building to put a road in or water and sewer extensions, okay? So I talked a little bit about the types. On the next page, it says types and uses. And what I did is I kind of drove down through the different types that are out there for the ones that I thought made the most sense for this potential project. And really, there's only one that you're gonna be eligible for if you were decided to go forward with this. There's only one type that you're actually gonna be eligible to do. And that's the one through the next Michigan Development Corporation. I'll explain what that is in a minute. But before I do that, what I wanted to do is just kind of talk about what, basically, how they work in terms of how do they, how do they use to pay for infrastructure? So normally, you capture your taxes. You have a budget. You probably have a capital improvement plan. And you fund your own activities. And then schools have their capture, they fund their activities. The county has their capture, they fund their activities. And na, 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 na. You have all of these different taxing jurisdictions. So in these TIFAs districts, they allow you to capture some of their taxes, pretty much 100% of most of those taxes in addition to yours. So that's how you pay for the infrastructure or the bonds, is you're capturing the county's tax, you're capturing the community college's tax, and so on. There are some restrictions. These programs all work a little differently, and some of them are tailored for specific things. So in some of these programs, you're allowed to capture 50% of the school mills as well. But generally, at a standard LDFA, the old model of it, you couldn't do that. You can only capture what they consider local mills. So the community college, the county, the community's military, and any of their associated mills. You can capture those, but you couldn't capture the schools. That's a standard LDFA. The next Michigan Development Corporation was created about 10 years ago in the state of Michigan to do, had, they had a specific purpose when they created it at the state level. They were trying to create and support the logistics industry's growth in Michigan. So distribution centers, warehouses, dare I say, Amazon, right? So they wanted to be able to support specifically that industry. So they broadened the capture out to include 50% of the school mills, okay? So I've laid that out in the last column. It talks about, if you look at the next Michigan Development Corporation, you go to the far right, it says you can capture from the township, the county, the intermediate school district, the college, and 50% of the school mills and the state education tax, 50% of that as well, right? That makes a huge difference. If you're trying to figure out how you're gonna finance an improvement, having access to those additional mills makes a huge difference in how long it takes to pay off that project, whatever it is. Some of these taxing jurisdictions and some of these types of LDFA's, they have the ability to opt out. And sometimes they don't. It depends on which one you're talking about. For the next Michigan Development Corporation, the taxing jurisdictions do have the option to opt out. So as you go through the process to create one, you send out public notices to those jurisdictions. That's part of the process. They get the notice, they have the opportunity to appear at a public hearing, express their position, their opinion. And then later, within a certain number of days, they have the ability to opt out if they want it, okay? I do wanna comment on one thing. The school mills are really important. The school mills are half of the total military in the county, typically. So still, having access to 50% of that is really important. But guess what? The state makes the school districts whole every year. So even though 50% of their mills are getting captured, the state's actually paying those districts every year for the loss revenue. So where does that money come from? It comes from the state education fund. So the state captures money into a statewide fund that they use to fund schools, right? And right now, they have a lot of money in there. So that's actually where the money comes from. That's where the loss occurs. They pay the schools back, it comes out of that fund. So the schools aren't harmed at all. In other words, there's really no reason why they would opt out. They're gonna get their money one way or the other. But in the meantime, you benefit. Okay, so maybe I should stop there and just ask you about the fact. Do you have any questions about?
Usually, how long would it take to pay that off? Or that depends on the cost?
Totally depends on the cost.
Gotcha.
How you wanna finance it. So one thing about LDFA's, I said that they can issue bonds, and that's true. They can accept loans. They can apply for grants. A community can give them money. So they have different ways that they can, they can generate revenue from a building that they build and lease out. There's different ways that an LDFA can actually pay for the cost of infrastructure. But far and away, the most common is to bond for it, like issue bonds. Now, when they issue the bonds, there's different types. I don't wanna get too deep down the weeds with you. And this is not really my area of expertise, parking lot bonds. But there's general obligation bonds, and then there's municipal bonds. General obligation bonds basically means that the community is not backing the bonds. So the LDFA is, will issue them on their own. That generates a higher interest rate on the bonds, but it's fairly common, right? If the community were to put your full faith and credit behind what their bond issuance, they'll get a lower interest rate, but it does work against your credit, right? 'Cause you only have so much bonding capacity. So that does work against your ability to bond in the future for other things. But my guess is you probably have plenty of bonding capacity in the community currently. So basically, the nuts and bolts of how it works is the first thing you do is you have to establish a district. The district can be one property or it can be multiple parcels. And like I said, in the past, they used this for creating industrial parks. So you can have 200 acres, you can have 1,000 acres, you can have 20 acres. So whatever you wanna do as a community. So you create a district, and it's defined by the needs and bonds, a legal description of what that district is. So that's the first step. After you do that, you create a board. The board is appointed by the township. But like I said, they're technically separate from city council or from the township board. Every year, you approve their budget, but otherwise, they have to manage their own projects. So that's how it works. Usually, you put at least one member of the board on their board. But you also could put citizens. And usually, you'll, property owners that are within the district sit on the board too. Because they're the most interested parties of all. Everybody wants to benefit from the infrastructure.
You meant for that township residents, they could be on the board?
Yeah. Well, normally, it would be township residents, one member of your board. And then the majority of the board would be made up of the property owners and within the district that you set up. So you establish a district, you establish a board. The next step is you write a development plan. And the development plan is basically says, this is what we're planning to do. We're gonna extend a water line to a property. That's, that's what your, your plan will say. After you've created the plan, or simultaneous to creating the plan, you also create what's called a financing plan. The financing plan basically says, this is what we're gonna do and this is how we're gonna pay for it. But they're basically very, very similar. In fact, a lot of the line items have to be filled out or identical between the two. So after you create the development plan and the financing plan, the board has to approve it. And once you've done that, if you're gonna go forward with the project, you would then figure out how you're gonna finance it based on what your financing plan says. So let's say, our plan is, we're gonna extend the water line, we're gonna issue a bond to pay for it through this authority, okay? Then the next step after that would be for the authority to go out and do the bond issuance. Usually, they work through banks. So a bank would come in and say, we will issue the bonds on your behalf. In a lot of cases, the banks actually buy the bonds themselves and put it into the portfolio. Now, you asked probably the most important question of all, which is, okay, let's say we're gonna do this, how long is this gonna happen? Because while this infrastructure is being paid for, you're not gonna be collecting taxes off of that new project. You're not gonna be collecting new taxes. You can collect the old ones. I'll go over that in a minute. But you're basically foregoing your taxes for however long it takes to pay off that infrastructure. In Marysville, for the Chrysler plant, it was, I think it was seven years that they had to go without collecting any tax from the Chrysler plant. But then, when it ended, they started collecting about 400,000 a year that they could use for their budget, right? So that's the way it works, is you're delaying it for a period of time, but eventually, you're gonna get your tax collection from that property. The shorter the payback period, the better. So let's go to the how tax increment financing works. Let's go to this one right here. So at the time that you create the district, what it does is it establishes the baseline assessed value of all of the properties that are in that district. If you only have one property, then that's all you worry about. But it establishes as the baseline value. So that's shown in this blue bar down below. So all the taxes collected from that property at the time, for the future, you'll continue to collect those taxes. So you're not completely losing all your, you're, you're gonna keep what you're currently getting, right? For however long it takes to pay off the infrastructure. But then, over time, every year that goes by, that property theoretically improves in value. How does it improve? There's a couple of ways. The first is, the property gets reassessed every year. Property generally increases in value by 1% to 2% per year, normally. Obviously, inflation, recessions, things like that can affect it. But normally, it increases slowly over time. So you're gonna get a small increase just on the assessed value of whatever's there. But really, the way that they, they increase in value is from new construction. So your company comes in, they're gonna build their building. All the new taxes that are gonna come from that building are gonna be collected to pay for a lot of the bonds, for however many years that takes, right? So that's how it works. Now, in this case, I didn't run, you know, numbers on this particular project, so I don't know how long it would take. I don't even know if financially it makes sense to do it. I haven't run the numbers. In the long run, if you had more than one parcel or one property in there, you're likely to see other development happen at some point. You'll be able to collect from all of that during that time period.
I'm sorry, Dan, what do you mean when you say it doesn't make sense?
I guess, well, so let's just say it's a $1.2 million bond issued to install a water line. Then you're gonna have interest on the bonds, right? So you do an amortization schedule, and it says your bond payment and your interest on the bond payment is X, right? You gotta compare that to the tax revenue that's gonna come in from that project. And if the tax revenue is not sufficient to pay for the bonds, you've got a problem. And that's what I'm saying. I haven't run those numbers yet. So I don't know if it makes sense. Again, the more properties you have in there, the more development that comes along, the better it is. So one of the things we talked about is, right on that corner, Tony Suave's property. They approached the EDA a couple of years ago, well, actually, it was about three years ago now, with an interest to develop their property. They were talking about medical office and maybe a little bit of apartment, maybe a couple of small apartment buildings. They had wetlands in the middle of the site, so they really couldn't do like a huge development like they wanted. But they could build, you know, four or five medical office buildings to support those medical facilities that down the road they have, or are being built. So that's what they were thinking is, you know, somebody needs to build medical offices to support all those doctors, so they can see patients close to the facilities. So that's what they were thinking. And then maybe a couple of apartment buildings on the site as well. So could, you know, if that development were to go forward, could you capture from that? And in addition to this other project? 'Cause the water line's gonna go right past the property, right? Could you collect from the other two or three properties that are already there in the future? If you wanted to. You don't have to, but if you wanted to. Could there be another development? We talked about how the water line might extend to the next property. Could there be another development over there? Me, right? If you put water in, it becomes more attractive.
Or that mild strip of land I told you about there.
So part of what we would do for you is we would do the tax estimate, how much it's gonna collect in taxes. And we could forecast out, that's how we typically do it. Like, you know, we don't have a development on this other property today, but would we have one in five years if there was a water line there? Maybe, what do you think would go there? How big would it be? You can make some estimates, right, on what that, that could be.
We have Hansio Construction. Would they have to pay into it or could they opt out of it?
No, no, they can't opt out of it. But no, they, if you put their property in it, it doesn't affect them at all. They're still paying the same tax no matter what. Yeah, everybody pays the same tax no matter what. The difference is what you do with the taxes once you collect them, right? So if you put all those properties in there today, and let's say they increase 1% or 2% per year, you can capture that 1% or 2% increase to help pay for the water line. One last point I would, I would make on the infrastructure is, let's not forget that you're also gonna be selling the water to the users. Anybody that connects to the system may be making revenue off of that. That's all right in your pocket. The LDFA does not capture that. So any kind of revenue you generate off of providing that service to them, selling the water, you would still get to use that, right? Pretty much, that's all I was gonna cover. That's kind of the one-on-one on how this works. The process, if you were to go forward, it takes four months under state law to go through the process to create an LDFA. And so that's kind of your timeframe. The bond issuance, if you were to go that step, that's about another 90 days. So that's what you're looking at. Now, you could do some of that, maybe overlapping. But you're, you're easily six to seven months if you started today. Six to seven months from now before you actually have any money to do any improvements at all, of any kind. So that's how it is. I do wanna caution you that LDFA's can work against you too. If you don't generate the tax revenue that you projected, and you're short, you can't make the bond payments, it usually falls back on the authority unless you back the bonds. If the community backs the bonds, you're now responsible to cover the gap. So you gotta be aware of that. You don't have to back the bonds, but if you do, you, you have a responsibility to cover any shortage. you, you have a responsibility to cover any shortage.
What about the authority, if they backed the bonds and the tax revenue's not generated? What happens there?
There, usually what happens is goes back to the state. And the state tries to create a plan to reclaim those tax dollars somehow. And if they can't, they will disband the authority.
And what happens to the water line, does it?
Well, the water line becomes yours anyway. I mean, the authority never owns the water line. They cover the cost of it, but it'd be your one.
But if it's a thing, do we end up having to pay off the rest of the water that's owed on it?
No, if you don't back the bonds, they can't force you to pay for that. But most likely what they would do is, they would put a special assessment on the properties that are using the water line. And they would use that money they collect from the special assessment to pay off the, the what's owed by the authority. So that's most likely what they would do.
Yeah, that's probably, would be all the properties that are on there would be assessed, most likely, I think. There's, what, about three properties, or four?
Ultimately, if I understand what you said, the monies really do come out of education, the tax captures, at a state level, just not at a local level.
Correct. Yeah. So the schools are gonna be fine.
But they still, it's still as money that otherwise would be allocated to education, in the end.
Right. But like I said, they have a huge state education tax fund. So, and, and like I said, we have these two districts all over the state. So it's not a problem. It hasn't been a problem. Maybe someday it would be, but right now the state's flush in that fund, right? Yep, someone else was gonna mention. Well, any, any other questions?
No?
I, I just, we had a meeting today and Christie was here, and thank you for her allowing her, she had a lot of good input. They're kind of, the one gentleman who's like, kind of like the project manager and isn't a builder, they're kind of pushing, you know, to start this. And, you know, we've never did anything like this. I told him, they could take a bit. I mean, his real estate broker understood. I mean, he's probably seen this before. And we still have issues like the water, you know, how are we gonna pay? And some of the traffic issues. They, their engineer has not approached Macomb County yet. You know, there's a little bit of disconnect between the engineer and, and so there needs, he need, they need to get their act kind of together on this.
Well, I did tell them that, what I heard from the road commission, because I talked to them, right, as you asked me to. So the road commission said, we would like to see the traffic study, but they don't think any permits are gonna be needed. So they don't think there's any approval that they will be granting one way or the other.
Is this St. Clair County or Macomb?
Macomb County. St. Clair County has jurisdiction over Springbourn.
Right.
So, and they, there is possibly an issue there with the way their trucks come in with that curve. There's a possibility that might need to be changed.
What's the administrative burden on the local authority to get something like this going in Tepico?
Well, so the key thing is, you know, there's one important thing I forgot I wanted to talk to you about. You have to create the authority. They have to create a budget every year, and they have to be audited every year. So they incur certain modest expense. Those costs all come out of the revenues that are being generated, so you don't pay for it. But once they create a budget, it goes to you and you have to approve it every year. But it's their job to execute the budget, right? So it's ongoing from that standpoint. There's a couple of things that community is responsible for. You have to file a report every year with the State Tax Commission, which is basically a one-page document, but it says, this is how much, this, this is the total assessed value of all properties in the district, this is how much we collected, and this is how much we spent. So basically, that's the purpose of the report. And it just shows the state that you're not in a negative, that you're, you know, that the authority is making their bond payments, and that it's being handled appropriately. The other thing is, you have to put a version of that report on your website. That's a new, something new in the last couple of years. So it's just accountability. We want the public to be able to access this information. And so you have to put it on your website, that's about it. Now, the thing I forgot to mention is, the only one of the LDFAs that you're eligible to create is the Next Michigan Development Corporation. Well, you're not technically gonna be creating the authority, because the authority already exists. The Next Michigan Development Corporation was established about six or seven years ago. And it consists of four counties, including St. Clair County, and thirty-five communities that are all part of the Next Michigan Development Corporation. They meet every other month. They have a board, and they just formed an executive board. And their job was to incentivize logistics projects within those thirty-five communities, right? So there are certain incentives, certain types of tax abatements that they can approve on behalf of communities. They also were given the power to create a regional local developer finance authority, which they did about four years ago. So in Chia Wasi County, which is the most western of the four counties, they had a very similar project at this point. Where they had a community in a township that, there was a, a local company that wanted to relocate to an area that didn't have water and sewer that was in the township. They had water and sewer in the city that was right next door, but they needed to extend it to that site so that that project could happen. And that also was around a fifty thousand square foot building. So they created the regional authority. Those two communities are the only members of the authority at the moment. So what you would do, what you would have to do is you would, number one, have to join the Next Michigan Development Corporation, which means you would be one of thirty-six communities. And secondly, instead of creating your own authority, which you can still do that, but what you'd have to do is take one of your authority board members, but have to sit on the regional board. And they technically approve the budgets for all of the projects in, in the LDFA. So they would approve the budget in Chia Wasi, they would approve the budget here. You would still do your approval of it too, so I'm not telling you you're gonna lose that authority, you still have it. But that's how they did it. So they, they wanted the ability to create a regional LDFA. Now, here's the reason why you can't create an LDFA on your own. Under the Act, you have to have a population of ten thousand people or more to create your own. You also have to have water and sewers, or I'm sorry, police and fire services. Doesn't have to be your own, but you have to contract and have it in, right? So those are limitations that are in the law. The Next Michigan Development Corporation doesn't have that requirement because it's regional. So you would be able to do it under their auspices if you will. It's been working really well in Chia Wasi, I can, I can say that for them.
Yeah, I mean, we have contracted fire services, but our police is through St. Clair County Sheriff.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, so that would be fine.
Yeah, but they don't have a cruiser on patrol all the time in the township, I mean, they just don't have the, we have maybe five thousand in this township right now.
So to join the Next Michigan Development Corporation, there's a membership fee. First year only, that's five thousand dollars. That's what it costs to join. I happened to tell the company that, and they said they'd pay for it, and I made the deal. After the, the first year, there's an annual fee, membership fee, and it's five hundred dollars for townships. So it's not a lot of money, but that's, that's it. So that's all it takes to be a member. Then you would designate someone to sit on the board. But they're shifting over to an executive board, so you wouldn't even have to do that. Once a year, they'll have the full board get together, but the rest of the time, the executive board, each. Executive board represents, there's one member from each of the counties that'll sit on. So it's pretty much straightforward as it goes. But that's what you would have to do if you wanted to go that route. The benefit is, the Next Michigan Development Corporation allows you to capture more taxes than other LDFAs do. So there is, you know, that's, it's worthwhile, if you wanted to go that route. So if you choose not to do an LDFA, the other financing mechanisms would include making them pay for it, or doing a public-private partnership where they pay part of it and you pay part of it. And then you'd have to figure out how you're gonna pay part of it. You could establish a special assessment district, that's one option. You could issue your own bonds, do it that way. Or you could take a loan from the county and pay the loan back. I mean, the county would probably be willing to do it, using ARPA money, that's my guess. I can't speak for them, but I think they might consider, because it's not a lot of money. So one point two million is not a lot of money for the county, that's all I'm saying. So potentially, they could loan you the money at zero interest or a really low interest rate. And then you would just use the taxes you're capturing, just like you would with an LDFA, to pay it back over time. It's up to you. I mean, those are the options that you have. The, the last option is, don't do the project. Just tell them we're not doing it. They'll locate there, but we're not gonna be funding a water line. So that's perfectly legitimate too.
Yeah. Now, we're talking about different options, about them doing wells, their big thing is the fire suppression.
In the warehouse, yeah.
Yeah. Truck wash, they could take advantage of a, a truck wash that's already located on Mersey Highway. Says you'd like to have a truck washed, but it's not a deal breaker. So...
Are there financial advantages to the company that's going to locate in the district? Do they have financial advantages? No taxes?
No. No, they're, they're gonna have to pay all the normal taxes. They, technically, they could apply for a tax abatement through the Next Michigan Development Corporation. But if your community didn't want it, and, and I wouldn't advise you to do that.
How would we pay for the water?
Right, because it, it basically, if you do a tax abatement, it cuts their tax in half. And that takes you even longer to pay for the water.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, exactly.
So you probably would do that. If it was a really big project, you probably would.
There's no advantage directly to the company that wants to locate and have water.
They need water on it. That's their benefit.
Right, choosing this property because it's right on 994, they wanted that exposed on 994.
Yeah, because, you know, there's other places they could go where there is water, if they wanted to. But if they really wanna be on 994, huh? So I gave you a lot of information, you'll probably have more questions for me, don't worry about it.
Yeah.
I'm free at any point. And we're, we're obviously involved in the project behind the scenes, but we don't have any skin in the game. So I want you to know that we, we're here to work for you. We wanna help them too, we've been helping them, that's what we normally do, we're right in the middle. But we're also advisors to your board, so even though you're not a member of the EDA, we're still here to help you out.
Well, we appreciate the information. And, and like, today during the meeting, I said, this is a huge step for the township. I mean, we got, we wanna go through this eyes wide open and know all the advantages and pitfalls of this. I mean, but the one gentleman, you know, he's kind of, he's been doing like, he did this, the traffic study and a couple other stuff. And he got nervous because the property owner put up a new for sale sign. You can't, I mean, that's a part of land speculation. You look into it where you could do a project and if someone else comes along, says, you know, offers more money, you know.
You don't have control over yourselves and buy us land.
Right, right, and that's correct, yeah.
Can I ask a question? I was a local resident. But I've, I've worked for forty years in St. Clair Shores on the Mottick Mile, which was one of the original Tifa districts. To not, it's a Marin area, it's an original Tifa district where we captured guns. If time wasn't of the essence, with, it sounds like this development, which I know nothing about, it sounds like they're like pushing envelope to you guys. If time wasn't of the envelope, it seems like, looking back and looking at other areas, if you're running the water line from Ira down county line all the way to Springbourn, that it would make that whole mile a very interesting, from my history, and I don't think about the new stuff, a very interesting Tifa district because of the empty lots and the empty space. So if you're gonna capitalize, you would capitalize greater if you made that whole county line between twenty-six and Springbourn to here a district. But that would be like an immense planning thing, an idea for the township, because that's where the development's gonna go. But is it quick enough, just a thought?
Yeah, well, that's...
Because the water's gonna be there.
I don't know if it's, if it's quick enough. But that section has always been right for that. Precisely so, when even further on down twenty-six mile to Melton.
That'd be in last week.
That's a whole Tifa district. It's already zoned, commercial, industrial, whatever. And that's what everybody has already thought about for years. And we didn't know how many years in the future it would be. But it was always deemed for that purpose, so.
It was the area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, we see it too.
And last week, sort of, when we were at Ira Township, we, we met down Ira Township, me and Keith went down there, and Dan was there, and so was Jim Anders, supervisor of Ira Township and the head of their DPW. And we talked about development down, let me see, Highwayward. They, they have a, a water main from county line to Melton Road. But we, in order to make it more efficient to serve on the Casco side, we'd have to put a parallel main. Now, something like that, we would establish a district to help pay for mains like that, I take it.
Yeah, any kind of public infrastructure, right? Even if you had to, this is gonna sound odd, but even if you had to make improvements at Ira Township's treatment plant, you could do that, you could actually pay for it. Even though it's not even in your community.
Right, yeah. It's just like when we, it's like when we do our fire contract, we help pay the, you know, upgrade the fire. And if we, when we do this, we have to stand up a DPW. We could contract it out to Ira to maintain the water line, but there, rather than we, we have our DPW in the same way how we do EMS and fire. Yeah, it's a, it's a big step. I mean, to look into this more and talk about more, we meet with you. Is there other people you advise to bring into this discussion?
Not at this point. So Next Michigan Development Corporation has a corporate attorney on staff. And they just changed, the other, the previous corporate attorney went to Lansing, I believe, it was to be their corporate attorney for the city. So they just hired a new company to do that. So they would be able to provide legal advice and assistance with doing things like writing resolutions, if you wanted to go forward, right? I used to do this. I used to work for the city of Rochester Hills, and I was the, among my responsibilities as the director of economic development included managing the LDFA for the city. So for seven years, I managed an LDFA, expanded it, and then added a new one for another type of LDFA called the Smart Zone on top of it. So I've got a lot of experience in this area. I've rolled the plans, rolled the resolutions, handled the whole process for the city. So that's quite a possibility, unfortunately. My time's really tight right now. So it, if you decide to go forward, I really have to look at that and decide whether it would make more sense to go through the attorney to do that or to... No one else in my staff really knows how to do this. Not that it's that complicated, but you have to read the law and, you know. I, I already know a lot. First of all, does anyone have any questions or...
What I fear, you know, the one thing, you know, and I know communities fight over economic development. That's the thing, you know, and I worry about the Hockey Arena in Kimball Township. When that guy came to town, who promised the sun and moon, and they went, they went through a lot, and then that. And I don't wanna get burnt like that, I don't wanna do something that's gonna, you know, burn the township. I wanna be careful about this. And I know the client here, he was pushing hard, but we're not gonna rush for his convenience. And we're gonna do what's best for Casco. We're gonna do what's best for Casco.
So, and I agree with you to the extent that having a long-term plan makes a lot of sense. But at the end of the day, all you're really talking about is one water line, one mile. That's it. So it's not really going to affect, you're still gonna need to develop a long-term plan, right? But you know you're gonna edit the water line probably on that road anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we, in our master plan, we have like, like service, like medical service. We, in order to make that terminal happen, we'd have to be a conditional rezoning there. And Steve, our planner, he does that, that's acceptable, so.
Well, I just got a question. When you say water line one mile north of Green City Highway to Springborn, are you talking a two-inch service just for your designated Tifa zone? Or adequate to get pressure on Mayor and 32 Mile?
No. No, it just, it's...
Just for that?
Yeah, it's just for that area. It's a 12-inch line, that was John's forecast.
But it'd be kept by the businesses developing along it.
Yeah.
Is there capacity for other businesses to develop in the future from that amount of water?
Oh, yeah. They have a lot of water capacity.
They're challenged with sewer.
Yeah. And they're looking into alternative, I mean, septic, and they have these for different developments, almost like, because we had a thing, a guy was wanting to establish some condos on St. Clair Highway, where it's like a little sewage treatment plant.
Called a package plant.
Right, yeah. So the engineer, this Eric Ossling, was looking into, so then, for bigger projects, you could have, the sewer shouldn't be a showst, but the water, of course.
You know, one other thought I just wanna throw out there, and I know you gotta, you gotta see, looking at your watch, like, come on, Dan, shut up.
No, I got that.
But, I don't blame you. But one other thought, just to keep in the back of your minds, is how valuable do you think that property is ultimately? Ultimately, and is this the best use for it? Or would there be a better use for it long-term? It's probably still needs water, but, so that's a risk you take. And obviously, you don't really have say-so over whether this company buys that property or not. You do have say-so over whether you put water.
Yeah. We actually had a proposal for a solar turn there about six years ago. They're looking at that, and so, for some reason, it just doesn't locate there.
Well, I know another company that is interested in building on the expressway that's right in the area.
Is that the vitamin factory that Jeff Blum was...
You didn't hear that from me. That was somebody else's, like, yeah. So, you know, that's gonna be an attractive site. When I first saw it, I was thinking, wow, if you could just get infrastructure, you're gonna have something nice right there, right on that, right on the expressway.
Yeah. And the traffic stuff, I still had concerns about that. I know, you know, they were saying, but I have anything warning signs, maybe even like an amber, a flashing amber light down there to give people a heads up when they come over that overpass saying, because, you know, I mean, I've driven that hundreds of times. You have, and you have, yeah.
I would suggest this, though, because I heard of, Christie called me, gave me a little report on today's meeting. I talked to the road commission, my call. They told me it's not gonna require increments. They wouldn't make a comment on whether they would require the sign, the warning sign on the other side of the overpass or not. They wanted to see the traffic study so they could just be aware of what's going on in all that. What I would encourage you guys to do is to call them. Hear it from the horse's mouth. Don't wait on the company to do that, because you may not believe them. Might as well just make the call now. I've already done it, but, you know, you may wanna, you're the ones with the biggest concern, so I would just call them and, you know, get the answers from horse's mouth. They do need to see the traffic study first, but that won't take long to prepare. And I did read it, and it looked fine, I think. I'm no traffic engineer.
Yeah. That's, it's a dangerous intersection.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, you've got a school at one end and a large community on the other, dense population. It doesn't make for happy dead fellows there. We'll see what the traffic study says.
Okay, anything else, Dan?
Nope.
You gave us a lot to think about, so. Any other questions there, guys? Okay. All right.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Take care. Okay. Lots to think about, too. Okay. New business. Okay. Revised passport grant contribution. Okay. What I did, I did not put the correct amount. I gave you two. Resolution 2022-12 in the old one, okay? I was sent back from Pam that we asked for two. I put, it would be a total of 150,000. It's now, we could go up to 192,100 dollars.
Well, good, that'll be the civilian million.
Yeah, our contribution, okay, our contribution from the Parks and Rec Fund, instead of 37,000 to 25%, it would be 48,100 dollars.
All right.
Okay, and this, you'll see a bullet point, it rescinds resolution 2022-11.
Okay.
So I have a motion.
I'll make a motion?
Okay, this moment, I, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. Our Parks and Rec Fund plan gone out of date at the first of, the end of December. That's the one we approved last week. Well, they wanted a capital improvement plan.
Oh, yeah.
So I grabbed the desk, even though I misspelt it, and I gotta recover, because I think this is one of the ones that was lost on my computer. I threw it together.
Yeah. I wonder where that came from.
Yeah, so I put together the show ahead of both streets when we were doing and putting the park, so. And so I put together, the one thing I gotta see if it needs to be approved or not. If that's something we can prove easily, and that's all I can talk to Steve. We do have a master plan, but not a capital improvement plan. I gotta talk to Steve to see what we can do.
Yeah, I like this in phases.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I like that.
All right, so let's get back to...
Okay, so get back to this resolution. Now, proper wording is, I make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-12, the resolution for recreational passport grant program application.
Also add the point that it rescinds.
And this resolution rescinds the prior resolution 2022-11. And the cost factor has increased in 2022-12.
Okay, we had a motion to adopt resolution 2022-12, which rescinds resolution 2022-11. Do I have support for that?
Support.
Okay, we had a motion to adopt resolution 2022-12 and support. Okay, roll call vote.
Is it roll call?
I have roll call, but I don't know.
Okay.
It's eyes down here. I think you have on here just eyes.
Okay. Well, just a simple vote of approval. All in favor of the resolution?
All right.
Aye. All, all votes were in the affirmative. Motion carries. Thank you. Now, get this loaded, talk to Pam tomorrow, and get this loaded into the...
Do we want to do a roll call just in case? I don't know. With our previous one, we just had the eyes, too.
Yeah. Well, we did a roll call vote on that.
Maybe we should just do a roll call just in case.
Okay.
So we don't have to redo it again.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, roll call vote.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carries. And I will get with Pam, we'll get this uploaded in the V N R, going to get that going. Okay, the next item 2B, invoice for grant application assistance. This is the money we owe Pam, 2,580 dollars for, her helping us out with this passport grant application assistance, which she helped us out, you know, a lot. I mean, the first of April, April 12th day, we were in here loading that stuff up. And in August, it opens up again, I can upload a lot of letters of support and that, so, yeah, we were busting chops at me, so. Okay.
I make a motion to approve the invoice from Pam Blau in the amount of 2,580 dollars.
Okay, we have a motion to pay the invoice for Pam Blau for 2,580 dollars. We have support.
I have support.
Okay, we have a motion, support, to pay Pam Blau Incorporated 2,580 dollars. Roll call vote.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Okay, we have five votes in the affirmative, motion carries. Okay, our next one, our next one is broadband funding and feasibility study. Colleen, do you want to talk about it?
Oh, I'll tell you what, there's so, we, we sat with Ray, I believe his name is, yes?
Yes.
And, gosh, I, to put it, to put it simply, when, when broadband, when Dave's company comes in to Casco, they're going to be doing the southern end of Melton Road, and we have given him addresses where he's going to work. That area was uncovered, or not covered, by Comcast, okay? But we realized in, in talking to the wideband group, that there is, let us say that, you know, this is the Melton Road corridor that Dave's coming in on, is coming down from 26 Mile Road and enveloping this area. There's a whole larger area that is not serviced. I don't wanna say adequately. They, they might think they're being served adequately, but there are perimeters now being established by the government and broadband companies of the, of the quality, the speed of service you get. And it has been brought to our attention that if we do a study in the whole township, that will give us the facts and figures of who is not being served, who is being served at what rate and what speed, that if we capture that information, it is, it is the townships. We get to, to expand on it, we get to capture it and give it out to whomever we think will be able to offer best service in the township. Now, I think there's a whole lot more than that if you've read through this, but that was my basic understanding, that they would give us a customized and detailed survey of the entire township that we could use to facilitate more customers for whomever.
Yeah.
If Dave or whomever wanted to come in, and that would give Casco Township up and running.
There's these USDA grants. They use this information to help apply for the grant. This kinda gives them a boost up. It's sort of like when we're doing our Parks and Recs, I mean, applying for grant, we have a Parks and Recs plan, and that. So, little, I'm not quite sure, there are several different, does anyone have questions? I know Dan, you...
Well, I did some, prowling around on the internet, except for that, for maybe an hour or two. And it seems that SEMCOG has a great deal of data on our area and many others, of how many people are served and how they're served and what speed they got. And also, from just by accident, that you can go on Verizon and test whatever speed you have. There's a little, there's a little tool that they provide, anybody. And I looked, and I was surprised how good it was from Comcast, but 85%, by the way, is 85.4% from the 2022 census, I think, or some, some more recent data, are served by internet service in Casco. They can get it, and they can get it at 100 megabytes per second, per minute, per second, and it's pretty good. I think the download is better than the upload, but it's enough to get streaming video and download whatever you want to. And it may also be true just with cell phone service. I mean, I have, I have Xfinity cell phone service, doesn't have much to do with anything, you know, it doesn't have to do with my Comcast service. And I can get anything, anywhere, in buildings, all my clothes. So I'm not so sure that $40,000 spent on the wideband group is a worthwhile expenditure. I think we might need help, this is just my thoughts, that we might need help writing the grants and/or the applications for funds to help the township get better. But, you know, we have 4,000 some hundred, 4,035 residents in the township now. That's the last census. We have 1,500 households. That's 30 bucks a household to serve, to, to survey them and to gather this data, when a lot of it seems to be there. We could hire a grant, a, a, a grant writer, probably half-time, for an $80,000 a year salary, that's half of that, half-time, and have much more done than, I'm suspect of this because of the amount of information I found on the internet and how it's, how detailed it is and how broken down it is, and, you know. And I think the effort to do this is, is really needed and necessary. I'm not sure how many people really don't have service here, that's a hidden question after seeing the data. There are some spots, and there identified in the data, too, that don't have access. And most of the access is through one provider, either a Comcast or a satellite provider, but it's fast, relatively fast, over 100 megabytes per second is the new standard. 25 used to be what they called broadband. That's probably all I know now. But anyway.
So you're saying we should...
I, we need to look further, I think, because I think that's an exorbitant amount of money to, to gather that kind of data, which is probably, most of it already available.
It's probably available.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot of stuff out there. And it's, it's graphed, it's charted, there are diagrams, there are maps with the areas that are covered and not covered, and how they're covered, what the speed is, in colors.
I just don't know how to read those things.
In colors. But they're very straightforward. No, I understand, but they're offering to do that again, and to gather it all again. $30 a household. I mean, we could hire somebody, and maybe we could use their help. There's a lot of grants out there, a ton of grants. I, I think we should consider hiring a grant writer on a part-time basis as opposed to doing something like this.
So you, what you're recommending that we ignore this and do some more exploring?
I think it, I don't, I don't necessarily recommend we ignore it. It might be good to seek other quotes, you know, about what other people might do. It might be the data that I found, which was real easy to find, is, is not sufficient, is not current, is not accurate. I don't think, I, it was SEMCOG data, Southeast Michigan organization, government organizations, so.
So you're recommending we postpone this?
Yeah, and look further, and I think we should go for the funds if we can improve service in the township.
Right, postpone that data.
I just, I...
You're teaching, I'm learning off, yeah. I'm learning.
Thanks for bearing with all that.
Okay. I don't know nothing about broadband and stuff like that.
No, I agree, I think we should...
But you can get a lot of good service with your cell phone.
So you're making a motion to postpone this issue, or do further research?
Yes.
And Jennifer, you're making a motion?
I'll support it.
Okay. A motion was made with support to postpone the proposal for broadband funding and feasibility study and will do further research.
I did take pictures of a number of the screens that I saw.
Okay.
Something we asked.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Gina?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. So this is postponed for now. We do further research. Okay.
I appreciate how Colleen has dove into this issue.
Well, this is Mr. Cox.
But you've been following it.
Yeah, we were.
Or somebody who has no Internet in their house, yes, I'd say.
At the end, I'll talk more about Colleen and I visited her to say hello.
Oh yeah, that was incredible.
Okay, our next issue is network computers invoice. This is for their invoice for helping us on our recent.
Computer issues.
Yeah, computer issues, which they were good. Brian did do worked hard on that, so we do appreciate that. So it's for a cost of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and then he said.
I make a motion to approve the invoice for network computers in the amount of nineteen sixty-nine ninety. Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support to pay the bill of network computers for one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Roll call vote.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jo?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, five yeses and the affirmative. Motion carries. Okay, IT support service. Yeah, talk about another meeting we had yesterday too. Okay, we have a quote for network computers for three thousand, that's our current, our.
Our current provider.
Yeah, current provider, even though our contract's over. We have it from Hi-Tech, and we also have it from RISA. Jennifer, do you want to, you've been doing a lot of the research on this?
Well, I will talk about the Hi-Tech. I don't, I didn't meet with the RISA.
Yeah, well, they didn't do the, yeah, they didn't do. Hi-Tech came in here and they did a survey of ours. RISA supplied us a quote, but they didn't come in and do the survey like Hi-Tech did, so. Jennifer, we.
So we met with Jay from Hi-Tech yesterday, and he went over the results from the audit that they did. They had a technician come in and hook up to our server, check out all of our computers to see, you know, are we up to date on anti-spyware, antivirus, ransomware, whatever. And unfortunately, we scored a ninety. Now, normally you'd think a ninety would be good, ninety out of a hundred. But the lower the number, the better.
Oh.
So we scored a ninety out of a hundred.
Oh.
Yes.
We failed.
Yeah, I, we went through all of this. Well, this is, this was the PowerPoint. Jo has one over there if you guys want to look at it, and I have one over here. And the PowerPoint basically is a summary of this.
Yeah.
There's a lot of information here. But I went through this last night, and it's quite interesting because they have a report for each one of our computers. And it tells you, you know, if you have the antivirus on, if you don't, if it's up to date. He did say that the patches, which I guess are like updates from, say, Microsoft or whatever, those are not being updated, which is not good. So there's a lot of things that are lacking.
Yeah, and our computers are what they call, not engineers, but.
Clones.
Clones.
So they're not like HP, which, you know, he said is okay, but if we have problems with it and say we don't go with network, we don't have any kind of warranty, we're, you know. Yeah. So our server that we just got in October will probably need to.
There was a plate missing from the back.
Yes, there was a plate missing from the back of that.
Backup, just for a laptop, not for a server. See, even the new one he gave us wasn't sufficient to do backups for.
So they're saying if we had a name brand like Microsoft or, I think they would send the patches.
He said clones used to be a lot cheaper, and the name brands were a lot higher. He goes, but they've leveled out where the prices are low the same.
Yeah, they're always sending, you know, packs of patches.
And then Hi-Tech, they, there, there's, on the quotes, I think you guys got these today. So there's three different options. So the first option is the one that says zero on the bottom.
It's like perfect.
So basically, that is buying blocks of tech time. So say we have a problem with a computer, we call them, and they come in for an hour, even buy blocks of time. Normally, it's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. But the more blocks you buy, the cheaper it is.
So ten hours is one thousand four hundred and fifty?
Right, right. And then the more you buy, the more of a discount they give you. So that's one way you can do it. Another way to do it is their, do they call it premium?
Premium.
No, professional. So that is the one that costs eight hundred and twenty. So basically, that includes everything that you see there. They do.
Yeah, it's eight hundred and twenty dollars per year.
Per month.
Per month.
Per month. Yeah, per month.
Per year, wow, that's great.
Sorry, I mean, they constantly monitor. They update things. They send, like for ransomware, if it's opened by an email, they have a thing where they can send fake ones to us to see if we click on them, and if we do, then they send us like videos to say, you know, you shouldn't do this.
I know major companies that do that.
So they do that, they're up to date on everything. They're in Casco, which is nice.
Yeah.
Um.
They do us update our passwords more.
Yes, we, we would basically have to come up with a security plan as far as passwords and just a whole bunch of different stuff. I didn't get that far yet. Yeah, I didn't get that far yet. So anyway, and it comes with, he also told us that with the Microsoft three sixty-five, our email through Outlook is only updated for thirty days. So you might think you have emails back from six months ago, say, but we don't. So that includes a five dollar monthly cost to update it monthly, which is through Microsoft. And they also have a cloud. So he said, like in a perfect situation, we have our server. We'd also get a backup server, so if something happened to our server, we'd have a backup server. And then they also have a cloud. So if there's a fire or something, then we can get stuff from the cloud. So the cloud is also on here, it's listed separately, which we don't have that. Had we had a cloud, we wouldn't have had the problems we have. And we wouldn't have been down for three weeks. So then the next quote is the one for ten seventy-one. That includes unlimited tech. So if we have a problem, they come, we don't have to buy blocks of time or whatever. But like Vicki and I were talking about, Vicki said, you know, if you, if you're paying, the difference between, so it was a two hundred and fifty-one dollars you have a month, you might as well just pay the cheaper one and buy some blocks of time, because we don't always need something here.
Right.
No.
And I guess if we did go this route and we went with them, we could try it that way for a year and say if we did wind up using them more, then maybe we switch to the other way.
I think so.
Um, I was very impressed with them.
Yeah.
When we did have the computer problems, Jo called and they were, a technician was on their way. We're not even their clients, and they were on their way. And Jay called, I think, every day.
Training.
Chugging up on us to see.
I think we, we had a high tech.
You guys did, quite a few years ago.
And it started out with them.
Our Casco.
Then it got to be a prospect or something.
And I, I explained that the administration of time was of a different.
Generation.
Times change. Well, and we have to be protective against.
Yeah, obviously, you can't go through that again.
No, no. So.
Yeah, all the communities I talked, they have high tech, they really like.
Well, they're professional.
They are. They have technicians available that are at their, you know, location. They have, you know, you call them anytime if you have any problems. And, I mean, they just seem really knowledgeable, too.
RISA came in here, but they didn't do the survey like this. They said they were going to. I don't know.
RISA?
Yeah.
Yeah, what were they doing when they were here?
Well, they just, they just a preliminary, like when Jay was out here that first time. But they were supposed to send someone out here to do exactly what Jay's technician did, a deep dive into our systems. They just gave us a basic quote there, so.
Did, just on the side, did Hi-Tech mention any of the resources available for homeland security for ransomware government agencies? I just heard this on television one night, not so long ago, that they have a section that deals with government ransomware attacks. So it might just be good to know about.
Yeah.
I don't know much more because of the RISA.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's funny, when I, it was the state trooper that came out here. And she put us in touch with the cyber crimes division of Lansing, and they coordinate with the FBI on these issues. But that state trooper, she goes, she commented, she goes, I don't understand this. She goes, she'd much rather break up a plant.
Yeah.
And she's like, police.
He's saying, oh, I'm doing.
Yeah, and on the blocks of time, like if we were to buy those, those never expire. And then Jay said that they have something in their system, so if you get down to like a certain amount, they'll let you know if you wanted to buy more.
And what you say about our machines, like, we should, let's say, well, we have about twelve machines, and we should like every three years replace.
Well, you have to have like a, kind of like a plan, so you don't want to replace everything all at once.
Right.
So if we were gonna, you know, think about replacing, then maybe this year we pick two of the oldest ones or whatever that needs replacing and do those this year, and then next year, do different. So they're not all old at the same time, and you don't get the cost. You can kind of spread it out over a few years.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. And he also did say, sorry, he also did say, like, when you call, it creates a ticket in the system. So there's always a way, and you have a portal, so you can always go in your portal and you can check, you know, your, you know, oh, they came on this date, and check what they did and whatnot, so.
I mean, when our incident happened, it happened at almost like the perfect time. Because tax season was over and we weren't nearing elections. I mean, just think when all those people lined up there to pay their taxes, that happened.
That one.
Or during election.
Right.
So the pandemonium we would have faced, so.
But we need to do something because even though we're back up, nothing's changed.
Happened.
Nothing's changed.
Yeah, they could be, they were saying it could have been sitting on our.
It was.
Yeah.
It was.
Just because they're in a spending area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well then.
Okay.
What cost preference, which? This again is kind of not my world.
I, I would suggest, and this is just my personal opinion, like Vicki and I were talking, to do the cheaper one, the eight twenty. Buy some blocks of hours. And then if that doesn't work, then, you know, next year.
We can renegotiate.
We can switch to the higher one. Because I really, I mean, if you think about it, how many times have we had network out here? I mean, minus just this last, you know.
And you had issues getting service out of it.
Right.
Should we wait till RISA does this, or do you guys feel that we should get some sort of protection?
I think we need something, but.
I like, I've always preferred high tech.
Yeah.
And I do like that they're.
They are Casco business.
I did too.
Okay. All right, are you gonna make a motion?
I can make a motion.
A motion.
All right, let's see, what am I making a motion? How do you have it worded? Um, how about if I just make it up? I make a motion that we approve Hi-Tech to be our IT services. And we're going to go with the professional agreement. And then, what you guys want to.
Do I put the amount on the professional?
Yeah, eight hundred and twenty per month.
Okay.
And then, do we want to just start off with the ten blocks?
Yeah, that's fine.
And that we buy a ten-hour block for one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, we have a motion to buy two for the the professional Hi-Tech maintenance plan for eight hundred and twenty dollars per month, plus a time block of, for ten hours for fourteen, for one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Do I have support?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion, support.
Who's supporting?
Gina.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call vote.
Jennifer, yes, Dan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Jo?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, five votes in affirmative, motion carries.
I will call Jay tomorrow, and I'm sure he said we're gonna have to meet up again and go over.
Sure.
Whatever.
Okay. Like everything, prices are going up, and it's going up online, so. So bear with me on this. Okay, back in February, okay, this one that says original work order. It's for one thousand, one thousand six hundred and fifty, eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty-nine. Okay, well, the price went up. I have this other one that I added. It went up by eight thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty dollars. So it's to get what we're originally gonna get would be a hundred and seventy-four thousand, a hundred and ninety, so eight thousand dollars. Mike Zoplitz, he looked at it. He says that we've been needing our quality, called eighty-twenty, and we've been doing all the roads. He says that he was able to keep it down roughly, it's only three hundred and sixty dollars more. If he cut some time and job to go, he said we'll still have adequate coverage. It's just that we've been fortunate, we've been diligent through the previous years. So this year, we can afford to cut back a little bit on the limestone hall. So instead of that, we would be for one thousand, one thousand six hundred and sixty, two twenty-one.
Where's Thomas?
Okay, so it's dated the twenty-sixth of April, twenty twenty-two.
So I'll make this one. It's this one from this one.
Yeah.
So we just make a motion to approve that?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion to approve. Oh, let's see, what is this? The St. Clair County Road Commission Agreement, the amount of one hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Okay, we had a motion for the St. Clair County Road Commission Limestone Hall for one thousand six hundred and six, um, and two thousand twenty-one. Any support?
Support.
Okay, we have motion, support. Okay, roll call vote.
Jennifer, yes?
Dan, yes.
Gina, yes?
Colleen, yes.
I don't know, I don't know. You guys, that's fine with me. I don't know why I always have to say it. Because that's how it's always done.
We get ourselves.
I don't know.
Yeah, and.
Can we, could I add a little bit in my drive for you then, too?
Yeah. Mike was supposed to be here tonight, and they're gonna start to go. They had some personnel issues, so it'll be slightly delayed, but they'll get on it. They had to jump on it right away because other townships wanted it, and he wanted to get his townships first.
Yeah.
Because we're closest to the dock in Marin City, so that's why, that's why. Okay, all right. Next item is the two thousand twenty-two local road funding assistance program. Now, this is gonna be, it's the asphalt overlay on St. Clair Highway from Melton to Church Roads, continuation with last year, there between Hessen and Melton. This money, we're gonna use for this to match is the money we got from Commissioner Dave Rush, the COVID money that he got. We're using that. So I need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two local road funding assistance program agreement. The estimated cost of the project is a hundred and fifty-seven. Um, the estimated cost of the project is a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And we will, our portion is seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars for an asphalt overlay, Melton to Church Road on St. Clair Highway.
Okay, we had a motion to accept a two thousand twenty-two Local Funding Assistance Program Agreement for an estimated project cost of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. And our, our, um, portion is seventy-eight thousand, five hundred. Do I have support?
I'll support. Go ahead, you go ahead. All right, I'll support it.
Okay, we had a motion support. Roll call vote.
Jennifer, yes.
Dan, yes.
Gina, yes.
Joe, yes.
Colleen, yes.
Love it.
All right. Okay, the next thing is the audit. We, every five years, the state audits our assessing program. We were pulled ahead one year. We did very well except we're down, ding down one issue. Our poverty exemption guidelines. Now, you probably remember back, um. Okay, all right, so Shelley did it, um, we're pulled ahead one year. We scored very well except on the poverty exemption guidelines. But we did that, however, it wasn't in the language they wanted.
Oh.
Sounds like the Air Force, whatever. So Shelley did a correction active form, a correction action plan, and we're good on that. So, yeah, Shelley, she's worth every dime. Every dime we paid her. Yeah, so I just, this is information we don't have to accept, it's just.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, maybe I should, I want to talk about it in a formal setting. Okay, all right, the next one is modified fee schedule. We have some builders that drop off their plans before, they have to drop off ten plans when they do a commercial or industrial development. They have to be full before they go to the planning commission, the planner, sometimes they're brought in a roll. And for Brenda and Katie to do that, it takes a lot of time. So I'm recommending that we have, if they bring them in a roll, we have to pull them a fifty dollar, dollar fee. It'll be on the application, so it'll be right up front.
They'll put it on the website, too.
Can we consider that as a, as just a requirement for what they need to present?
It is, but a couple of weeks ago, someone came and they brought a big old roll.
Yeah, Mr. Fols, he bought a big old roll, so. It's just a thing.
But you can send them away if it was a requirement.
Yeah.
She has sent away.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause they, cause she should.
Yeah.
If it's express.
So, okay. Okay, which does.
Are we voting on that?
Yeah.
We're supposed to?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. All right, I will make a motion, um, that we request a folding fee of fifty dollars uh, from applicants at the building department, um, to save us time. Um, and if we can't be saved time, then we're going to collect fifty dollars fee for submitting, uh, uh, plans. If they are rolled up, they will be accepted, but there will be a fifty dollar additional fee.
It'll be on the.
It'll be on the. Flea, flea application. We have a flea application.
We have a motion to, um, to have a fifty dollar charge, um, a fee. If the building department has to charge, um, has to fold plans, do we have a support for that?
I'll support.
We have a motion support to charge a fifty dollar fee if building department has to, um, fold, roll up plans. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. It's Morgan.
Oh, really? Okay, roll call vote then.
Jennifer, yes.
Dan, yes.
Gina, yes.
Joe, yes?
Colleen, yes.
That's amazing. We know our cards. We know the alphabet.
Okay, um, the next, I didn't, is Vicki Holt pay increase in bonus. Do you want to read this, or do you want?
I'm not. I would like to read it.
Sure.
Yes, you're mine, Deputy. I'm gonna read the bonus one first. Dear Board Members, as you are all aware, since the November twenty twenty election, the Clerk's Department has been extremely busy. Not only have we had a lot to do with our own department, but we've had many other duties added to our already busy schedule. We oversaw almost every aspect of the hall renovations and repairs. We also put in countless hours sorting many, many years of saved documents in the basement. We designed and organized a new document retention system and revamped the election closet, just to name a few projects that we've undertaken. Vicki Holt, my Deputy Clerk, has been instrumental in helping to keep not only the Clerk's office running smoothly, but the whole township office in general. She goes above and beyond to get any task done, she works late and comes in early, and on the weekends to finish project, projects. I am requesting that the Board award her a two thousand dollar bonus to show our appreciation for all of her hard work and dedication over the last few years. Thank you for your consideration, Jennifer.
No move.
Okay, well, hold on, um.
I read that. So Vicki wrote this letter, dear Board Members, I am requesting a three dollar an hour raise. With all of the extra time and responsibilities, I believe this is a reasonable request. When the computer system was down, I worked every day and on Fridays. I come in whenever needed and help each department. I have taken on most of the administrative assistant responsibilities as well. I love working for the township and everyone that works here. I appreciate your consideration of my request. Thank you so much, Vicki Holt.
I have one question, does that put you up on our pay scale of, I mean, I guess I should have looked into that. Our, our pay scale on that. Oh, we don't?
We have a pay scale, maybe for starting people, not.
Yeah, just starting.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, that's correct, that's correct.
So I would like to make a motion that we approve both three dollar an hour raise and a two thousand dollar bonus for my Deputy Dog.
Okay, well, first of all, I'd like to say, yeah, Vicki does excellent work. And especially now in today's climate where these two do a lot of good work. I worry about someone losing them, we get somebody in here who has different ideas on about elections. And there, I mean, have anyone who safeguards, um, our democracy here in the township that sees two ladies when we do run the election? And like, yeah, they're the, been the project managers on this. Decades of clearing out downstairs. I mean, that was probably almost an EPA.
Yeah.
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 So, but I just.
And we're almost done.
Yeah, and Vicki, um, you do, you have a great attitude.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, okay, okay, you're making.
I made, I made the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to grant, um, a three thousand dollar bonus. And plus a three dollar, dollar raise to our Deputy Clerk Vicki Holt. Do I have support?
Support.
Okay. We have a.
Who are you, who are you picking? Colleen?
Yeah, okay.
You know what, I want to add, though, should we make it effective May sixteenth?
May sixteenth, so you wanna agree with that?
Effective May sixteenth.
Okay, okay, all right, um, roll call vote.
Jennifer, yes.
Dan, yes.
Gina, yes.
Shelley, yes?
Colleen, yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, we, yeah, with you guys, it's, I mean, it's gonna be tough in August and November. I worry about that with some of the comments made by them from.
Yeah, we're gonna have our field call.
It will be just fine.
Okay. Our next one, local governing body resolution for charitable gaming license, the Fort Detroit Golden Retriever Club.
Oh, here I am, eight seven, I thought we were giving you not only a three dollar an hour and a two thousand, but I thought we were giving you a golden retriever.
Which one would you like?
I have the golden retriever.
All right, Vicki, first of all, explain, okay?
Okay, so, um, my name is Ms. Cuffins from the Corners, Mrs. E. Well, whatever. Um, and I, many years ago, I adopted my first golden retriever, bought my first, I was twenty-six, adopted a single golden. Mom said I was crazy, fell in love. Then I moved on to adopt another golden. Fell in love with the breed of anybody who's ever been associated with them, they're amazing dogs. I then moved out here, got sick, wasn't doing well, recouped from them, and said, you know what, I'm gonna do one thing in my life. I'm gonna do more with Goldens. At that time, I wanted nothing to do with breeding, never had any kids, that was not my forte. Like, I'm gonna show dogs. Jim had a friend that bred Goldens, went up to Brown City, bought myself a three hundred dollar golden puppy out of his backyard. If anybody's ever been to the Detroit Dog Show many, many years ago, it was one of only five benched shows in the United States. Huge dog show to have as local to us.
What do you mean by benched?
Benched means when you go to the dog show, there's, used to be back then over two thousand dogs. Over the purebred AKC dogs, and they're in benches. So instead of now, we're all, we all go, we just put our pens everywhere, and we show our dogs in the respective rigs. All the Goldens were down one aisle, all the Akitas were down one aisle, all the Labs. So when the guests came to the show, they really got to experience all the different breeds. From what they were, and people did displays of where they originated from, what their purpose was, where they come from, what they do now, and all the different sports they participated in. So I went to that show with thoughts of showing my Fremont helicopter, who wasn't home. I was just investigating. And I came home and I told Jim, well, I still want to get into golden retrievers, but we need to put another zero behind a three hundred dollar dog. So a couple more years led by, and I met a friend in Ira who happens to own the two thousand eighteen Westminster Golden Retriever winner. And I have his half-sister. So I started showing her, I had another dog from Ohio that did really good, too, she passed early, it's up. Started showing my girl Lynn, had a couple litters with her, decided I would breed. Anybody who's into breeding dogs, one thing I can ask of everybody, there's two ways to get a dog. You're gonna rescue, which we all want to do, we all think is amazing, everybody should do it. But don't ever say to anybody, rescue, or what do they say, adopt, don't show. There is something to be said for a true AKC, working hard breeder. They work hard, it's a lot of work, it's not always a lot of benefit, yes, some of them do make money at it. But there's a lot of heart and soul into it, to always give you that option of having a golden retriever, or a German Shepherd, or an Akita, or a Chihuahua, or whatever that AKC breed may be. And they don't always get a lot of credit. They get a lot of, oh, they're just doing it for the money, there's a lot more to it than that. And I can tell you, because I started with that three hundred dollar dog. I went to a little bit more dog, showed her for a while, did great, kept her for two years, thought I'm gonna breed her, went to do all of her certifications that you need to do in your heart to be a good breeder, and she failed her hips. Couple of years later, I got another great dog out of Ira, an amazing dog. She ended up with a cataract and then randomly got a disease called Edison's disease. So I chose not to breed her anymore. Hence then, had already had a puppy from her, who ended up with another cataract. So my whole breeding prospect with a lot of effort was not always successful, and a lot of breeders go through this. But they're a good breeder, because if that hip didn't pass, then I bred that dog anyways. Babies are gonna have problems. So these are the people that I've surrounded myself with, is the higher end, they make the choices for the dog, not for the pocketbook. And there's a lot of them in your community and surrounding communities. And they deserve, if you're ever making dog laws on your books, to bring them people to your meetings to get their opinion. Don't just classify them with every other breeder, you know, backyard breeder or whatever, you know, whatever you want to call them. Give them all the options up to talk about things, because a lot of communities are really hard on them, and they do a great service. You know, I can't imagine a kid not having that golden or lab at the end of his bed. So I ended up volunteering, went to a meeting for the Fort Detroit Golden Retriever Club and accidentally put my hand up and ended up as the treasurer many years ago. So we found out, we've been having dog shows, you need to have a gambling license or a raffle license to gamble if you give baskets, you know, and make your fifty dollars. We never really knew that, we are learning it. We're hosting the Golden Retriever National, is being held and hosted by an Ohio Golden Retriever Club, but it ended up in Michigan due to venues. So the Ohio club's having it, but they're having it at the Monroe Fairgrounds. So the raffle there is huge, it's over ten days, it's different raffles, they couldn't pull the license, so we need to sponsor the raffle and pull the raffle for them. So we'll be running the raffle at the Golden Retriever National. So to do that, in my, I have to get a gaming license and then pull raffle licenses for my future raffles. And I need you guys to sign a resolution stating that Fort Detroit Golden Retriever Club is operating in your community, because we don't have an existing address, we use my address as treasure.
Yeah, Mrs. Cuffins gave me the, provided the, um, lial. I called Michigan Township Association, they said this happens all the time.
Oh, good. Good, no big deal.
Yeah, at first I thought it was gonna be golden retriever.
I did too, I was like, well, what's this gonna entail, I was a little worried. Yeah, and then first thing Jim said was, you do know this gaming has nothing to do with the new park.
I was probably you were gonna bring your pup.
I thought about it, but my twelve-year-old got groomed on Friday, I thought she would be the perfect one to bring, and someone rolled in, stumped. She's, she's, wait, a way to go back.
I watch these videos on YouTube, a woman talked about, um, finance and money and that. And she talked about the economic benefits of being married. But she says, she, she said, I don't believe in soulmates unless if they have four legs and covered in fur.
Nothing is better than any dog, any dog in the world, it's just. Cats do, I love cats, too.
I've got a lot of my childhood thing forward to those vet shows.
Didn't, I mean, they. And they don't, now Detroit's not there anymore. And, um, no, I tried to become a vet show and it just never quite succeeded enough. Oh, it is really hit the breed, that industry, the show industry. And we not only do, um, confirmation shows, which is, you know, pretty, my dog Ron, and he looks beautiful, but our club does rally, obedience, um, barn hunting, scent hunting, we haven't, we stopped kind of doing the fieldwork because it's a big undertaking. But at the National, which will be at Monroe, it will have every venue, and we will have golden retrievers from all of the United States and other countries competing for the top golden.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, cool.
Okay, in order to make this happen, uh, we need to do, um, a resolution to allow, um, the, um, Fort Detroit Golden Retriever Club to, um, operate here in Casco Township.
So do we have to type up a resolution?
That is a, I don't know.
Oh, actually, no, there's a form, did they give you a, you know, there is a form, I've made extra copies that you fill out with your A's and A's. This is local.
All right. Looks good.
Well, yeah, because it's Township Clerk signs it.
Okay.
Write your question, and you have your approvals and your.
Thank you guys very much.
All right, so how about if I read this out loud real quick, and then we can do the, okay. So, um, this is a local governing body resolution for charitable gaming licenses at a regular meeting of the Casco Township Board, called to order by Joseph Stevens on May tenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven oh two PM. The following resolution was offered. Moved by, so whoever's gonna move it, and supported by, whoever's gonna support it, that the request from the Fort Detroit Golden Retriever Club of Casco Township, County of St. Clair, asking that they be recognized as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining charitable gaming licenses be considered for approval.
Okay.
That's the resolution. So we need a motion and a, sorry, Jennifer.
Yeah, motion and support, I mean.
I will make a motion to support resolution.
Or adopt resolution.
Or adopt resolution, what's the number?
There's another number on it, so I don't know if we need to make our own number? Do we need to do that?
Resolution for charitable, you could just do, I'll just do that.
Yeah, that's on the way.
Yeah, right, the, the local government body resolution for charitable gaming license.
We'll make a.
Okay, support, we have a motion, support to adopt resolution for.
Dan.
Dan, Dan, for the charitable gaming license. Okay.
You know what I should say, too, just really quickly, because I shouldn't have let this off, because it isn't our county. St. Clair County has a huge dog show in September, around the fifteenth, at Goodos. And that has every breed represented, and that's about fifteen hundred dollar dog show. That's where we do most of our. It's at the Goodos Fairground, which is, obviously, that was a beautiful site. It's usually, so, weekend of like September twelfth or fifteenth is Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the big show is, is Saturday, Sunday. And we usually do our specialty on Friday, but because of the National, it'll be in Monroe, and then back to Goodos next year.
Yeah, that's.
But the Goodos show still goes on even without the golden retriever. And that's a great show to go see.
Oh.
And it's always our most time of year, September.
Yes, pretty in the market. Yes, pretty in the park that weekend, and nice and cool.
Okay, is it, we have a roll call vote on this?
No, it's just, um, yes, or, sorry.
Okay, okay, um, call for a vote on the resolution here, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, five ayes, motion carries.
Great.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, I appreciate you providing that, that would be good.
No problem.
Okay, we'll wait till Jennifer's done.
I can do this one.
Can you write about the AKC breeders?
They do, they were hard.
My folks bred German Shepherd, ethical breeders for 10 years.
I got my wine rider too.
Actually, I had, um, the number one wine rider stay at my house for a Goodls Philus.
Really?
And that's a breed that, that weekend, I had a couple breeders stay at our house. And we had the number one wine rider there, the number one Old English Sheepdog. So you've got this wine rider, which is silver and Knofur and standing on the backyard, just amazing, 'cause our yard's quite large and fenced. And then the, you know, the, the Old English, which is totally green for a show, so it's, it's about this big, I'm not even fluff.
Tell me, are there any breeders, reputable breeders of Wolfhounds in this area?
I don't know about in this area, I'd look into it, I could look into it. That's an ancestral breed too, there's a few breeds at AKC that are ancestral, which means you could go back so far in the.
Yeah, I might just bring one home with me if I can, I just, I.
Irish Wolfhound, is that, or is there other ones?
Just buy the Wolfhound. Well, there's a Deerhound too, he's even bigger than a Wolfhound, but I don't think I could fit him in a plane seat. So, I don't know, I don't know how I'm gonna get him back home.
Okay, we'll wait till.
She's just gonna make copies real quick, so we can probably move on.
Okay, alright, the next thing on the agenda are township signs. Now, this is a sign, we have one for the, for the cemetery, and then others are disinterests.
So Vicki did all the legwork on this, she, um, talked to, these are the same people that we went with, with the, the sign for up front. And we just asked her, because we're gonna try to clean up the cemetery because it needs some help.
Yeah.
So, and I, it doesn't have a sign, some people don't even know that that's our cemetery. So we decided we were gonna, um, see if we could get a sign, so this is the one she sent us, which I think it looks really nice.
The Edir Cemetery.
How, where did you come up? I've got it, with the Jacoby.
Yeah, there's.
It's on, it's on the paperwork.
Has it ever been properly changed, or is that what it's supposed to be?
It's listed in BSNA as the Casco Township Cemetery, so that's what would be on there.
That, that's what the people.
I asked Linda. Why didn't everybody get colored but me?
Color?
Why did you get colored? I was gonna say, it looked better.
We have original paperwork, it was originally Jacoby, it was somebody from the township from the 1800s.
So it wasn't like a private cemetery at some point?
I think it was a church.
They're used to be.
There was a church there.
Yeah, there is a, yeah, it was on Edir Road, North Side of Edir.
It was their cemetery.
I don't know what, yeah, the name, Chris.
I think it was Saint Jacob's.
What's that?
I think it was Saint Jacob's.
Somebody, Saint Jacob's, I swear I saw that somewhere.
The ritters, like, no.
But Jacoby was somebody from the township, but I don't probably.
We had a guy who did, remember he did an audit of the cemetery, there's about 900 souls there.
Is it important to keep that name, or is there some obligation to do so?
No, most of the people, everyone knows this is Edir Cemetery, it's the Casco Township Cemetery. What's that?
The Casco Township Cemetery.
Yeah, people don't realize it's ours.
Yeah.
Right.
But the, the sign here, um, instead of here, preferably be parallel.
And I think that's fine, because there's really probably room to put it that way.
Yeah.
Right.
That's alright.
And we'll, I would like maybe at a certain point, just a little bit of addition onto it, that we, um, we have welcome signs maybe like on both sides of St. Clair Highway, Meisner, um, Brashit and Palm Road, at a certain time. But let's take care of the cemetery first and then we'll discuss that, 'cause that, the rest of that takes room, well, this one takes room.
What's he say, I actually don't say, I'm confused.
He's gonna say, "Edir Cemetery, Casco Township, establish 1849."
No, just like, just Casco Township Cemetery, no way, here.
Oh, alright, alright.
Casco Township Cemetery.
We can take care of it, feel it?
What's that date?
18 what?
1849.
Is that, that's when the township was established, um, what about the cemetery?
I don't know, we can double check that, anything on here can be changed.
Okay, tell us a question. That's the thing about cyber, you can change it, I'll tell us a question.
So there, Jacoby are really not in the mix at all, good.
But that's interesting, isn't it?
Yeah, it's very interesting, but.
If ever, okay, if ever, we could do an informational thing that one time was called Jacoby, we could do a historic, you know, bronze.
That belongs in the, in newsletter, so we're working on that.
Okay, alright, so, uh, do I have a motion for this?
Yes.
Okay.
What is our cost here? $3,200.
That's for everything.
With installation, so I'll make a motion to approve, uh, $3,200 cost, uh, with installation for just two, it's. So just one side of the sign?
Yeah.
One side and break it.
And then we'll look at the other one.
Yes.
That's my motion.
Cause that's gonna be a motion, more than a motion, right? Okay, we have a motion to purchase a sign for a cemetery for $3,200, do I have support?
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion support to buy a county, a cemetery, um, sign for the Casco Township Cemetery for $3,200, roll call vote.
Jennifer, yes.
Dan, yes.
Gina, yes.
Joe, yes.
Conley, yes.
Okay, five votes in affirmative, motion carries. Okay, clothing donation containers.
Can I talk about this one?
Absolutely.
So, I don't know if you guys have been past Tommy's party store lately. There's four of those donations, like, big donation plates, there's four more now.
There's four more now?
There's eight altogether, there's four, like, they're, you know, the Tommy line.
Besides parking lot, and then there's four by the, by the front door.
There's eight. Um, from what I've heard, that is, like, people think it's for local donations. There is one, the, the Kids in Distress, that is a local thing, but I don't think they're there anymore. I think they have one at New York.
Yeah, they're, they're over there.
Yeah, it's, it's out, like, people just dump stuff, and if it's full, they put it on the ground, it's, it looks bad. So I would like to recommend that maybe we do ordinance against those. I think that's the only place in Casco that has them.
Yeah, I, I, at one time, I thought there was one or two in the Kroger parking lot, but I don't see them there anymore.
Yeah, um, let me, let me review the ordinance to make sure, it could fall under some of our blight stuff.
Okay.
If so, I'll sit the neck on them.
Yeah, well, good luck with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know who puts them there.
Yeah.
I'm just, I don't know.
We did, I mean, it's obviously the property owner must give some consent.
I would think so, yeah, I would think so.
So, but if there's nothing, maybe we'll, um, talk to Steve about something.
Yeah, just 'cause it's, it's, you know, we don't need people dumping their garbage.
I always take stuff up to St. Vincent's or good.
I do salvation, I do.
So young people, but this is just.
So I just wanted to bring it to everyone.
Yeah, no, that's, it's a good, it's a valid point, as a matter of fact, I took the last one, I'm going to close in quilts and blankets up. St. Vincent's has a new place right in Marysville there, Ranger Garage, nice going. Yeah, it's good organizations, I do a lot of good work, so. Okay, we have three road, next, um, item, three road commission work order. The first one for $15,000, $116. This is a continuation of last year's ditching on BT Road. So they're going approximately $1,300 north on, um, Putty Cut, um, Road and replace one driveway culvert, resetting some culverts, and, um, so this is just gonna continue on what we did last year.
And this is our full amount?
Yes.
There's no matching funds to this?
We're gonna have to do each one. We're gonna have to do each one at a second, so.
Oh, okay, now we can do it all together. Alright, the second one, for $8,910, is for one 14-gauge, um, okay, they have to, uh, drain tube there on Springborne Road, right at Church Road. The one's failing now, you're on the road tour, you saw that. Mike, they thought it could wait a year, it can't, so they're gonna do that. It's not, it's considered Springborne Road, that two, Church Road had really nothing to do with it, just two happened to be right at Church Road. That needs replacing. Okay, the last one, this is the most interesting one, for $10,000 for, $10,417. This is to deal with our black hole in Edir. We had a sinkhole that started on Edir Road.
Yeah, I mean.
West of Palms, now, um, it was, okay, it was starting, so, but it happened, Mike says there's a tube there that collapsed or got filled in.
Years ago.
Okay, they've been dumping rocks into it. Well, since then, okay, they wanna take care of that problem, since then, another one a little bit east of it's appearing. It's almost akin to what on St. Clair Highway is in, uh, East Chinatown or St. Clair when it was given away. It's very similar to that, Edir Road's right along the, the edge of the bank, that one, it's gonna be covered with flum. So, Mike, um, they're gonna work, put a tube in there to deal, help deal with this situation. Since, you know, I was worried about all Edir would get sucked into that, you know.
Yeah.
I don't ever know.
There was, I think it was Tom, um, Tom Cameron, the, the, the area foreman before Mike, he was saying that he put some, um, they'll put dye in there, and he couldn't find where it went out. It was like, um, bottom of those holes, so. Okay, I need a motion, I guess, to, uh, does someone have a calculator that they?
Uh, how about if I just do this? I make a motion to approve all three of the St. Clair County Road Commission work orders. The first one in the amount of $15,116, the second one in the amount of $8,910, and the last one in the amount of $10,417, um, as, as Joe described.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the, um, the St. Clair County Road Commission work orders on the prices list, do we have support?
Support.
Okay, we have, um, a motion support, roll call vote.
Jennifer, yes.
Dan, yes.
Gina, yes.
Joe, yes.
Conley, yes.
Okay, five votes in affirmative, motion carries. Okay, this is our annual letter from the Council on Aging. They were saying that, um, they want us to have a donation to the Council on Aging, but we've always turned this down, because what, they have the millage?
Because they have the millage.
Right.
That's right.
And they probably have ARPA money, they might have ARPA money.
I'm sure they do.
So, okay.
But, uh, Casco Township already, um, supports them with our millage rates.
Okay, so do we need a motion not to?
Yeah, we just don't do anything.
Just don't do it, okay. I know they do a lot of good stuff, but they have funding.
They do, but they have the funding to do it.
Okay, the next one, voter, um, the voter info cards would mail in because of the redistrict.
Yes, so, um, I don't know why they have to change all the numbers, but our whole township, our district numbers will change. So, everybody needs a note, a new voter ID card, which we have to mail out, and of course, we have to pay for it, the state doesn't have to pay for it. So, um, the new voter ID cards are gonna cost $716.47, and postage is just estimated, 'cause we don't know for sure. Um, we're hoping that we get, um.
Nonprofits for that rate.
Because there's a, a big chunk and it's election related.
That's the only time you can do the nonprofits for election stuff, so hopefully.
So we did it at the 30, 30.6 cents, but it maybe it'll be lower. So we put it as postage of $1,031. So that would be a total of $1,716.78.
Okay, written a motion to do the, um, Jennifer, is that a motion?
No, I was just reading, I, I can make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we do that, what I just said.
Okay, we have a motion for the voter ID card with mailing for $1,716.78, do we have support?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion, support, roll call vote.
Jennifer, yes.
Dan, yes.
Gina, yes.
Joe, yes.
Conley, yes.
Okay, five votes in affirmative, motion carries. Jim, we finally got to you, thank you for your patience. Okay, did you know that back in January, that Jim approached us that, he wants to title his field and get, getting to the county grain, he would have to access through on the west side of our property line and, uh, the 98 acres on Mike's Road. So I talked to our attorney, um, and said, Jim had to get, um, a survey, which he did, it's attached here, and easement drawn up by his, um, attorney, Mr. Byer there in St. Clair. So he did, I had our attorney look at it, she said, she, she had a couple bullet points about the maintenance of it. So, um, Jim and I basically went to legal, Mr. Byer and Chris Anderson, and they've worked together, they were just in court on animal cruelty case that worked out well, and, uh, they put the points that Chris wanted into here. So we just need approval here from the Township Board to, um, to grant Mr. Marker this easement and, uh, again, so he could start tiling his field.
Excellent.
Okay, we have a motion to grant easement to, uh, Mr. James Marker.
I'll support it.
And we have support, okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five votes in affirmative, motion carries, alright.
Them were good words.
Yeah.
Only took, what, three months?
Yeah.
Worry guard.
Yeah.
Well, and they get, they were impressed with that, the, the, the survey was, that came a lot quicker than I thought. Doesn't seem like survey is not too long.
Yeah, some of that tape, that ain't even certified, it's served.
And, and I have to mention, this will help drain our property as well.
That's what I always thought.
Yeah, so it's just, not just the benefit of Jim, but it benefits us as well. Okay, okay, we have another thing of citizen comments, any?
I, I have a board comment, actually, I think we're gonna add on there board comments.
Okay.
Like, to be a agenda.
Sure.
Separate things. Um, when Vicki and I went to the Clerks Institute back in March, we learned lots of stuff. One thing that we learned is that we should have contracts for our building inspectors. So there's a couple that we don't, so I, this month, would like to work on that with you, Joe.
Okay, for electrical and, um, mechanical?
Yep, so we can work on that and then, um, bring it to the board next month.
Okay, and we get the, off like boiler plates?
Yes, um, one of the ladies that actually did one of the sessions, she's in human resources and, um, she said to just contact her, she's like, "No need to reinvent the wheel," she's like, "I'll send you and you just put your township stuff in there."
Okay, good, good.
Yeah.
Alright, um, there's a, if you indulge in it, there's a few things, um, Church Road was closed, okay. They were supposed to replace the three culverts that were placed in 1975, are starting to fail. They're gonna replace it with a concrete arch, it was supposed to happen this year, but there's a 12-inch gas bean that run, runs along Church Road. They need to get the valves and the reroute to reroute it, that's a long lead time, so it got delayed till next year. However, the culverts are starting to fail, they had to shut the road down. So for the time being, Church Road between St. Clair Highway and Division's only opened local traffic.
Oh.
However, I was down there Sunday night, checking, and Pete, a guy in a truck and I, other people were going around the barriers, so I let the road commission know, they had to extend the barrier. You could see the, it's starting to collapse, the culvert.
Oh, dear.
Yeah, um, they replaced the culvert there, that's at Drum Creek, there on Division Road, several years ago. So it's just something, but yet the culvert here on Meldrum Road was replaced sometime in 60s. I've always remembered a culvert there, for some reason, that culvert, it could've been a different grade of metal, 'cause they got really cheap in the 70s, metal, so.
Different soil?
Yeah, there were different soils, so, um, yeah, until the further thing. Okay, we talked about the water service, they're, um, okay, oh yeah, there's gonna be a traffic circle or roundabout at Palm. There's gonna be a traffic circle or roundabout at Palms Road and Marine City Highway.
That's, that's crazy.
Now Kurt Weston says that with ten years up to earliest, will be, it's gonna happen twenty twenty-four, and what happened is.
Aggravation.
The county applies for a bunch of grants, they get turned down each year. Lo and behold, they have to get this one.
Well, it's, 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 it works the same way. First it's rails to trails, now it's something about having a, a river runs through it, and now it's roundabouts. So it's the flavor of the month, and.
What's that, some like traffic that?
I hope so, because that's where the traffic comes from, from the, from the quarry, from, um, McCloud Yards, or whatever they call it now, and good heavens. Those, those big gravel trains going around, that better be a subsidence around about.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
They can make those turns.
And the lastly, our, our residents down on Church Road between Springborn and Marine City Highway that had the flooding issue.
Yes.
They went up to the road commission to address this issue. The road commission, I, I provide you guys a letter. They threw it into the drain commission, saying, hey, there's a problem here. So we'll see if we, the big problem with that land, it's lake plain. It's, it's, I mean, it flattens out. I mean, we, I had a thing, but.
It's lower than the road.
And we also haven't, like, I had a call, um, a resident to build new house, their basement, or pump it out, but it's in a swampy area. In this time of year, it's very flat. It's just the realities of what, the topography of Casco Township is. But hopefully, maybe they could, the drain commission could get some relief too.
I hope so, and it's been an ongoing problem for years and years, but the, you know, the drain commission or the road commission often looks at it that their job is to drain the roads. Their job is not to drain your private property.
Right.
So you either build your property up, or you swale out or something, but it's, they've all, always said that to us. That's not our responsibility. But those poor people that live there, they can't even walk in their backyards, mostly here.
Okay, it's, um.
It does swell across the road.
Yeah.
It gets pretty deeply. There's ones I've actually gone on, because I come back home from work every day, it's like, I'm gonna go around, because you're not, oh, it's underneath it, you know.
No, it's, it never changes.
Yeah, I guess my last comment, there's been a lot of change in the township, a lot of stuff happening, and the stuff, if we do something for that water being, I want it to do it right. That's gonna benefit Casco, and, um, so we gotta be careful on this. And I don't wanna, I didn't like today, we're getting pressured. I don't like to get pressured, and, um.
My own personal preference is to see something that would benefit the residents of Casco directly, with jobs or services or something like that, and that's a, you know, really nice, um, set of properties there.
Yeah.
But I think that in the future might be a possibility. I mean, there's so much development going on, going on with the, the medical center down the street.
Industrial use, um, we could be looking at doctor's offices.
Yeah. I think there's a lot.
Well, we envisioned it, but, yeah, but they were, uh, the town meeting, especially from the, the point man with the company, really, you know, they're wanting to push this stuff.
Well, they have their agenda.
Yes, they do.
And we have a township to protect, you know, from being involved in the TIPA act in St. Clair Shores, which is so similar to what they're doing.
If you were gonna set up a TIPA district, which is not TIPA anymore, whatever they want to call it.
They're all calling it now.
To do it in that small, like, because you never want a TIPA district like in St. Clair Shores. We didn't want our TIPA district on Harper Avenue. That's our main tax money.
Okay.
So they picked the Nautica Mile, which was an off section. It does make money for the community, but it's not their main. You're never gonna make your TIPA district twenty-six mile road, because that money's funding your community. County line between twenty-sixth and Springborn is kind of off the beaten path a little bit. It's primed for something like that. But take the time to think, if we're gonna do it, I'm gonna include that corner lot, I'm gonna include that whole strip, because then that whole district. And if I'm not mistaken, like, even the, the tax dollars, the growth, you get to keep a portion of it. Only a portion of it goes back to the district. And the district can outlive the bond. When you pay off that bond, you can still keep funding those percentages to make improvements in that area, and more and more. So if you can extend the area in a, in a direction that it might not normally go, you know, so there's a lot more thought.
Well, when they talk about Marine City Highway corridor, this is just a spur off it.
Yeah.
And it's the main, so, um.
But if you do go to TIPA thing and you do form a board, you also want, he says, you know, you want the business owners, you want township, and you would, you want equal resident that aren't business to business. Because that's where your flag comes from, the people that, outside that don't understand it. So I'd be very interested if you ever did that comment, because I'd be happy to send it.
Oh, that'd be lovely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Because it was very interesting when we did it, and I was in my twenties at the time.
Now, does, does the city, the city of Richmond must have a TIPA district?
The bathrooms at the high school, I believe, were funded by TIPA, the concession building, and I know that, um, they redid the bathrooms at the odd, that was gonna be TIPA.
Because the city has a TIPA district, and, um, of course, sometimes the blowback is always, well, the, the, the people who own shops are benefiting by this money, but the people who live on the two streets over there in the neighborhood. Our sidewalks are crumbling, why don't we get this? So it's, it's a, it can be a sore spot between business owners and residents. So I think we have to keep, we don't have a lot of residents in that area, but.
But a lot of times it wouldn't develop had you not formed the districts, we could, see, like, with us, we had that same problem, because they did it to, like, build up that Marina District, and it was all private. It never really built up. It was already private land, so there was that argument, but you guys have land that really isn't built up yet, so it's not gonna work though.
Yeah.
Do nothing but help the community.
Nobody lives there, you know, it's, it's not going to, and that's why it's a perfect area, especially when I can get it through my head that it's going to be more office buildings and.
Service buildings for the hospitals.
Still there are hospitals, which are, you know, popping up like fuckers.
Okay, thank you, that was very good input, I appreciate that. Okay, any other discussion? I liked an idea about board comments, it's hard to imagine, I really do. Okay, we're up to a German, do I have a?
Yeah, nine twenty-two.
You're kidding me.
No, it's not my bedtime.
Mine too.
Okay, do I have support for that?
Ask them.
We have motion to adjourn and support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.